Shelby Carcelari, City Council Member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor of Andover.
Tim Berry, City Council Member for Andover.
Chief for Andover.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer for Andover.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Rick Lanzers, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
J T Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director of Community Development for Andover.
Yes.
Emily Wright, Intrum City Clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator for Andover.
Nice.
All right, did I say that?
You did.
All right, this time, I'm sorry, I had a funny afternoon. The invocation is done by Daniel, is going to be done by Daniel Ivy with the Anchor Baptist Church tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for the opportunity. Let's pray. Dear Lord, as we come to you in prayer, we ask that you would just bestow wisdom on our city council and all the members tonight, help them to make decisions that would be beneficial to our city and its growth. We ask for your protection for our first responders as they also serve our community. We ask for a spirit of unity tonight in the decisions that are made. We put your, put your blessings on all the proceedings. We just ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, sir. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask a technical question real quick? I just had a quick question since we're down and one actually, you know, stepped away from being a council member. Does that modify our, like, how many we need in order for a quorum kind of thing?
I think, I think you need to ask that question after the next agenda item, but, but, but the answer to your question is, as of right now, we still have six, right? So.
Oh, I see.
Four is a, four is a quorum and, and everything is fine. And if you were to have a vacancy, assuming the next question, then the quorum would, would, quorum of five is three.
Okay, so it would potentially go down one.
Yes.
If that were to happen.
Yes.
I understand, appreciate it, thank you.
All right.
Very good question, by the way.
Acceptance of agenda and on the acceptance of agenda, of the agenda, we'll add executive session at number fifteen on the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda with the modification of adding item number fifteen or adding item to the list.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four to zero. Oh, yes, skipped right over that, didn't I? We'll back up one. I'd like to open the floor for a public forum. If you have anything you'd like to say, please state your name, your address, and, and keep it short. All right. Public forum's closed, thank you, Troy. Seven, one, awards employee milestones. Jennifer McCoslin and Buck Buchanan are gonna.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you would, Mike Stein, can you come up here for a second, please? We've been trying to do this for these guys for a little while. Actually, Mike's has just, just hit his ten years. Troy did his back in July, but trying to get the schedules done and they figure these guys have range tonight. So as soon as we're done, they got to head out to El Dorado to, to go, uh, help teach stuff. So to begin with Mike, he started with the department September thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. He moved to the ranks of NPO one, two, and three, which is a Master Patrol Officer. So he went through all those, promoted to Sergeant in June of two thousand twenty and was assigned as the Detective Division here just a year ago. He's one of our defensive tactics, baton, and my favorite OC instructor. Went too happy when I made him go to the school because I told him they won't spray you again, sure enough he gets there and they sprayed him again. I did not do that on purpose, but he made sure I knew that, too. He's, uh, one of the Chamber Liaisons and, uh, an Air Force vet. So one, one neat thing about Mike is, uh, the first time I ever met him, I was doing testing for the department. And it was kind of humorous because Justin Phillips was here at the time as well, captain we used to have here. And you walk in the room, it was packed. That's when you used to get a lot of applications and it was, we had people test and probably get thirty, about thirty people or so. And Justin did the same thing. Who was that guy right there? He was sharp, suit, tie, everything else, just for testing. It's like, and kind of has carried the same way since then. Yeah, I'm gonna say this about both guys, I might as well say it now because Troy's the same way, but both of these guys get it. Troy's coming up next. You don't have to tell them to get out of your car and go meet people and do things. They understand that's, that's what the job's about, just to get to know your community, get to know people. So, uh, one thing, I mean, Mike was playing on Facebook one time, just got out and started playing, was it basketball, football? Basketball. Yep, but no, he had to play the younger kids, that's what he had to play because thought he had a chance, so. Yes, but that's what it's about, you know, just connecting with people. So again, both of these guys, Troy's the same way, he was yours. Yeah, same thing, they want to play against these kids, they can't go to the, the bigger places, so they'll find kids. But, but very, I mean, it is, I'm proud of both of the guys, they work hard. They, they're behind the scenes on a lot of things that goes on in our department. And it's just impressive to see how well, uh, this team works together in Investigation Section and, and they're dedicated to the department. I mean, ten years is, is good and I hope he does at least a minimum of ten more years, so to get me through, um, my time as well, so. But I do appreciate you, Mike. Come on up, Troy. Now Troy's been kind of talking smack a little bit. I told him, we've got evaluations coming up, you want to wait till after the evaluations before you do that, so. I've got the mic. So Troy started July fourteenth, two thousand eight. I don't know if you've seen Facebook or not, but I wished I had pictures to show up here from when he started in two thousand eight. Please look at those, because, oh my goodness, what a different person. Mike's the same, no hair, I mean, he does have the beard and stuff, but, yeah, my goodness, but with Troy, wow, what a difference. So he, he as well, he moved to the ranks, NPO one, two, three, became Sergeant back in two thousand fifteen. Troy's done, did a lot in fifteen years, uh, twenty twenty-one Officer of the Year. He had a two thousand sixteen Life Saving Award for Premature Baby Birth that happened in two thousand fifteen. That was national news that hit that one. Great job on his part, knowing what to do. He's one of our drone pilots, a TASER instructor, and also, uh, the Chamber Liaison as well. So a neat little story about, um, Troy is I was part-time for a long time and I came back full-time. So they tried to find a modified FTO program for me. So I had somebody I would ride with, but one day it was going to be with Troy. So we go out to the car and I remember I'm the one needing to, to be doing all this stuff that day. Troy goes and gets in the car, he's in the driver's seat, he's just ten and two. I mean, he is just, I'm like, he is nervous, what, what's going on with you? He's like, you got more experience than me. So it was, but he's done good. Again, I appreciate Troy. Uh, if you guys don't know this, him and Mike both, in Mike's Shiner, that Investigation Section is behind the scenes, they've worked their, their rears off. It's just impressive to see how they go after a lot of these cases, a lot of things that people just don't hear or see about. They deal with the worst of the worst, so they're all, both of them, all three of them are forensic interviewers, they hear the worst of the worst. But yet they come in each day and, and they're the entertainment of the department, there's no doubt. They enjoy, they work hard and they have fun at the same time, so I, I appreciate you as well, Troy.
Thanks, boss.
I just have to take a kudos for Troy. I actually pushed him to apply at Andover, is that correct, Troy? So I've known Troy for eighteen years now, something like that, so I've known him since he was this tall, so. Congrats, Troy.
You should have gotten an award.
Okay, in light of my appearance, Donna, why don't you stay seated there? And I get the privilege to talk about our chief, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Our Chief Financial Officer, Donna Davis, for twenty-five years of service tonight. And I do want to call attention to her husband, Scott, who's here. I think it's really important when you've served an organization that amount of time, you have surely taken some things home, whether or not that was the intention or not. So kudos to you for putting up with us for twenty-five years also. So since Donna's role is our chief bean counter, I'm going to stagger you all with some numbers tonight about Donna's tenure and things she has done. So it's important to know when Donna started, um, on July twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, the population was less than half of what it is today. So it was, um, right at or below seven thousand, today we're at fifteen-five. Due to that explosive growth, the amount of ad valorem or property taxes collected annually has grown by eight hundred and fifty-four percent annually. So in nineteen ninety-eight, Donna received, as she did the budget, one million, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy dollars. And in two thousand twenty-three, that number was nine million, eight hundred, two thousand, one hundred and sixteen. A lot of infrastructure has changed in twenty-five years and the way that we commonly pay for roads and sidewalks and sewer lines is through specials and Donna is the queen of specials. What some people in the room may not know is that in a lot of cities, most cities in Kansas, the county treasurer takes care of the specials. But no, no, in Andover, we take care of the specials. And when I say we, I don't mean me and the mouse in my pocket, I mean Donna takes care of the specials. And so that's the spreading of those specials over all of the benefit districts and getting those certified on an annual basis. In nineteen ninety-eight, Donna certified five hundred and four thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars of specials. And in two thousand twenty-three, she certified three million, five hundred, thirty-four thousand, nine dollars in specials. Over her twenty-five years, she's certified over eighty-one point seven million dollars of specials in the Andover community. She's also overseen a lot of financing, so I'm going to talk to you about bonds now. In wastewater revenue bonds, Donna's overseen the sale and repayment of almost all of these, not all, but many of these, of five point five million dollars in wastewater revenue bonds, forty-five million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in temporary notes, one hundred sixty-seven million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand in general obligation bonds, eighteen million in public building commission bonds. And most recently, she's learned about TIF bonds when the city of Andover took on our first TIF project in two thousand nineteen with thirty million, one hundred and fifty dollars in TIF bonds. And many of you in this room have heard me say that was the first TIF project in Andover, but it was also the first TIF project in all of Butler County. So we've been like, the, the learning, the model for the county at times as well. When you add all of that bond amount up over twenty-five years, and she just kind of laughed when we looked at these numbers this morning, it is over a quarter of a billion dollars, two hundred sixty-six million, nine hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and five dollars of financing in the last twenty-five years at the city of Andover. Besides money, there's been a lot of workplace changes in that time. Donna started in the basement of Old City Hall, which is now the Police Department, wholly the Police Department. At that time, it was divided in half. So she basically moved from an old basement to like, an office with a view. She overlooks Central Park now from her office here in, at Central Park. She's been through some software conversions and changeovers, which if any of you have ever done that, it's a very fun time to hold your position and oversee that change. And I couldn't recognize Donna's years of service without giving a little jab to her and my predecessor over the introduction of the Time Clock Project in two thousand nineteen, which continues to be quite possibly the most popular project that the city has ever taken on with the personnel. Regarding personnel, the Finance Department has grown. From nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand eleven, Donna and the Treasurer were the only employees in the Finance Department. Um, and at that time, Donna's, I don't know if I indicated that, Donna's title was Administrative Services Director. In two thousand twelve, her title was changed and she became our first Chief Financial Officer. In two thousand twenty-one, we added an accounting clerk position and then rapidly saw that in two thousand twenty-two, a second position was needed. And we are now at four for the Finance Department. Donna is an award-winning employee. She has been, she has earned the Excellence in Reporting Designation by the Government Finance Officers Association, twenty-three years for her work on what used to be known as the CAFER and is now known as the ACFER. And the changes keep coming. Two thousand twenty-one through current day, we've brought in more than ten million dollars in federal grants, which all have to be tracked and kept, um, accounting for and reporting done on. She, um, has helped us navigate self-funding our medical care, which we started this past July. And she just keeps smiling every time we bring her a new project and a new challenge. So in closing, I want to recognize Donna as a critical member of the senior management team for a quarter of a decade to the residents of the city of Andover. And we do have a gift that Emily is going to bring to you that I would love for you to open. And I'll just, um, remind everybody that your twenty-fifth anniversary is silver. So that'll kind of help explain the gift a little bit. Thank you, Donna, for your service.
But Jenny, wait, there's one thing that you've left out amongst all of that. She bakes a heck of a salmon roll.
Exactly right.
She's the reason. She's the reason there's an oven in the City Hall Kitchen, that's right.
Can you move it along, young lady?
And we, we also thought the wood reminded a little bit of Montana Mountains where we know she's headed before too long, but not right away.
Just saying. All right. All right, seven, two. Becky Day, AP CEO Director of the Year winner.
So I think it's important, we received the award here just, uh, back September eighteenth, but I thought it was important for the citizens to really appreciate Becky as much as we do. Now, the nomination package that was sent in by a couple of the department members, I think it was about eight pages long is what all they wrote up. I'm not going to read all eight pages, I only have a few things I'm going to highlight on here, so it'll save us some time. But, but I think it is important for everyone to see, and you can tell by the people that are here to support Becky that knows how valuable she is to the department. So, um, she received the AP Co's Director of the Year Award. It's remarkable because as it's put in my packet, that it's, you're nominated and then the state of Colorado, people from there choose the person. So they don't have a clue who she is or anything else, so it's an outside state that chooses your folks. So it's, it's a true testament that, to write up and actually her, what she's done. She really deserves this every year. If you see the work that she does, again, it's another one of those, especially for our Communications Division, is how important it is behind the scenes that people just don't see the hard work they put in each and every day. And Becky's a good leader behind that, that makes that happen. You know, during, uh, two thousand twenty-two was one of the most challenging times we've had for most people in our entire careers. As we all know, that, that a lot of things happened that year, especially for the Police Department. We had a captain that left that was over accreditation. She helped that process on trying to hire a new one. And then during that, we also had our accreditation manager, uh, leave as well. She took over those duties. She knew the process really would, really well and were able to help us succeed as we have the onsite coming up here in a few months. And it was mainly because of a lot of Becky's hard work and dedication, on top of her other duties she did as a, a nine-one-one director. She also, uh, had worked many nights, weekends, covering shifts. So a lot of times when you have somebody that calls in sick, example is this was Monday night, she called and said, hey, we had somebody calling sick, I'm coming in. So usually it's a short notice, she may, maybe get a couple hours of sleep and then she comes in and she gets to work. During two thousand twenty-two, she made sure that we were never shut down, uh, the nine-one-one center, that we were always staffed. And she also made sure that our staffing was finally full-staffed, which is remarkable because of short staffings throughout the entire country and, and even our positions, police officers, we're having a hard time finding people. She's running full crews. Thank goodness we're back to normal on that one. But her flexibility, unwavering determination, leadership, there's never a time during that where we were shut down. Director Day embodies the customer service skills that are critical for dispatchers to excel in the role. Her empathy, effective communication, composure under pressure and dedication have impacted countless individual lives in our community's center's reputation. So I want to say thank you, and I think it's important for everyone else to recognize her because that's an important, um, award that she's got and she's definitely deserving of it.
All right. All right, consent to Gen eight, one through eight, five. Yes, sir.
I'd like to, I'd move to approve consent to Gen items eight point one through eight point five as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four, zero. As I mentioned earlier, we had a, uh, city council member resign immediately and, uh, going forward, we'll see what we need to do with that position and, and, uh, we just, uh, thank, uh, Joe for his, uh, his service.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to the designation of Councilmember Dr. Joseph Ford.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four, zero. The cottages at, at Cornerstone, ten, one bid award for public improvement to serve the cottages at Cornerstone. Rick's going to talk to us about that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, before you tonight is the public improvements. This is one where they're doing the water, sewer and street halls, one bid, um, for the cottages at Cornerstone. This one is a hundred percent special assessment financed, so Donna can add some more to her, her numbers here. The city has no obligation other than to, uh, finance it through the special assessments on this one, as is per the, uh, previous, um, documents that were approved by the governing body, previous council meetings. The contractor is Noah Construction and I'm glad to say that we're, seem to, getting a little bit better of a trend and I probably shouldn't say this out loud in council meeting, but our bids seem to be able to come within our petitions a little, a little bit. So I hope that's an indication of some things settling down a little bit. But, um, I would recommend that you would approve the, the total bid for one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any about this project.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Rick, what dictates that they all happen at the same time, um, paving, sewer, water versus independently?
It generally, it's at the discretion of the developer and how fast they want to move. And this project is not a huge project and I think they're wanting to kind of get going, so, um, you bid it all at once. You don't have that delay where you got to wait for the two projects to get done before you start the next one.
Perfect. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the lowest qualified bid from Noah Construction, Goddard, Kansas, in the not to exceed amount of one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-four cents, and reject all other bids and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for public improvements to serve the cottages at Cornerstone.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for Rick. On the engineering estimate, Rick, are the, are they just, it's kind of a hypothetical question, I guess, but are the engineers just starting to just increase their? Seems for a while we were always higher than the engineer's estimate. And I mean, you mentioned that we're starting to come, come down, but are the engineers just, you know, blowing them up just because they're, oh crap, we're?
Well, I think it's a little bit of they were projecting, because you remember, they do these estimates before any design is done. They have some ground and they have an idea how everything's going to lay out. But, so, you know, there's a little bit of risk into an estimate when you really don't know everything you really need to know to get a really good firm estimate. So, um, but the developers, uh, if, as you may or may not recall, the developers, when they sign these petitions for dollar amount, they're saying they're willing to try to market that land with that amount of petition to it. So they always have a little bit of concern and are holding down those, trying to hold those petition limits down because, you know, we could go ahead and prove it at that top dollar amount and then that would adjust those lot specials up, which would, uh, obviously make it harder to market those lots. The, uh, actually, on this project, the, uh, the lot, I can't remember what it comes out to on this one, but it's going to be actually not, um, it's going to be pretty, uh, effectively priced because it's higher density development, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four, zero. All right. Founder's Parkway Resolution, eleven, one resolution, Les Mangas was going to talk to us about that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the resolution before you tonight for your consideration is to begin the eminent domain process on the final parcel of right-of-way for the Founder's Parkway project between Andover Road and Allen Street. We've discussed this in the past, but we've tried to negotiate with the owners and come to an impasse and moving ahead to the eminent domain.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution declaring the necessity to appropriate private property for the use of the city of Andover, Kansas pursuant to KSA twenty-six dash two zero one.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries four, zero, twelve, two zoning amendment at eleven, oh, eight North Andover Road, Z, X, A, two, three, dash, zero, 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 three.
Mr. Mayor, are you on the right one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twelve, twelve.
Oh, I skipped one, didn't I? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Twelve, one zoning amendment, two, two, zero, zero, four, South one fifty-ninth East, Z, dash, A, two, three, dash, zero, 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 two.
Mr. Mayor, what are you, what, you guys, you need to say something about it?
Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, do you have the checklist for this item? I don't know that we got that printed for you or not.
I don't.
Okay. I'm going to give you my iPad.
I don't know if that's a good idea, Jennifer.
Or I could pull up all my doodad, how about that?
Doodad is just what I was thinking to give him.
Oh, we got you, that's, got you, I don't have one of those things, do I? I lost it, Jennifer. Man. I've got two of those, right? Okay. Thank you. Please don't skip away, it did it. What am I doing wrong?
Why do you keep scrolling?
So I could read it. I got to be able to read it. There it is. That's what I tried to do. Perfect. It's still not there, man.
It's probably not the top, you could go all the way.
Maybe. I'll pull it up on mine next time. Checklist. All right, here we go. This is an application to change the zoning district classification from A, one agricultural district to a, to the SF two, single-family residential, medium-density district on the property generally located at two, zero, zero, damn it.
That's right.
Two, zero, zero, four, South one fifty-ninth Street, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like to ask Council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because. themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
I now ask, will ask the city council if any of them have received ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this agenda, which they would like to share.
No.
Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case?
No, sir.
I now ask the council members if they have received copies of the draft minutes of the planning commission for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes, sir.
I now call on city zoning administrator Les Mangus to provide us with report on this case.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this case is really a bit of housekeeping for this property owner. He acquired the property many years ago, split off from a much larger surrounding property, which left him with a non-conforming zoning status. He came to the city with this application to bring the zoning of the property in line with the size of the lot and the single family use of the property as it was zoned for agriculture. Planning commission heard this case at their last meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
Have any, have any written communications been received? Thank you, sir. Have any written communications been received by the city clerk?
No.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the council members or city staff?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Does the applicant wish to present?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question for Les. Does this change, you know, when we're changing these zoning requirements, does it change taxes or anything like that? I mean, you say it's just housekeeping, but.
You know, taxes is really not a city function, that's a county function, but it is used for single family and has been used for single family residential uses, not agriculture as the zoning reflected.
Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? We would like to welcome anyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and the video of the public hearing has been made available, so please limit your comments to the information not previously shared at the public hearing held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone from the public have any, any new information? That would be no. And so does the applicant have any further response to public comments? No, because there weren't any, assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case. You have received on an outline of the choices provided under the state statutes for council action KSA twelve, dash, seven fifty-seven, and how do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the findings of fact and recommend that the city council approve zoning case Z, dash, A, two, three, dash, zero, 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 two, changing the zoning district classification of the subject property from the existing A, dash, one agricultural transition district to the SF, dash, two, single family residential medium density district.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. I'm having a heck of a time tonight, huh? All right. Onward and upward. Twelve, two zoning amendment, eleven, oh, eight North Andover Road, Z, dash, A, twenty-three, zero, zero, three. This application is, right? This application to change the zoning district classification from B three, retail and service business district to the I, one industrial district and MXI, mixed industrial slash commercial district on the property generally located at eleven, oh, eight North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
Nope.
No.
No.
I will now ask the council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this agenda.
No.
No.
Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case or received any phone calls?
No, sir.
Thank you. I now ask council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes of the planning commission for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes.
Yes.
I now call on city zoning administrator Les Mangus to provide us with a report on this case.
This subject property has a bit of a story to it. It was platted and zoned many years ago as a somewhat of a mixed industrial use where it would, was intended to be a storefront on the Andover Road face, but allow industrial uses at the rear of the property. Back in twenty eighteen or nineteen, the owner had a potential buyer that had a use that didn't fit in those industrial uses, and he applied to rezone the property to the B three district to service that potential buyer. The zoning was changed, the deal fell apart, and the zoning remained as that retail and service business district. His desire is just to revert back to that original zoning to be more in line with the other properties that he owns to the north and potentially have another storefront with some light industrial type uses or storage at the rear of the property.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? We would like to welcome anyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and the video of the public hearing has also been made available, so please limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone from the public have any new information? All right, then the applicant does not need to make a response. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you will receive an, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the statute, state statutes for council action, KSA twelve, dash, seven fifty-seven. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt the findings of fact and recommend that the city council approve zoning case Z, dash, A, twenty-three, dash, zero, 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 three, changing the zoning district classification of the subject property from the existing B three retail and service business district to the I, one industrial and MXI mixed industrial slash commercial district.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Persons agreed by the final decision of the council on this matter have thirty days after today's action within which to appeal to the district court. Twelve, three zoning amendments, five, four, five North Andover Road, Z, dash, A, two, three, dash, zero, 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 four. This application to change the zoning district classification from B two neighborhood business district and SF one, single family residential district to the MXN neighborhood transition mixed used, mixed used district on the property generally located at five forty-five North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have conflict of interest.
No.
No.
I would like, now like to ask council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this agenda item, which they would like to share.
No.
Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case and or phone calls?
No, sir.
I now, city council members, if any, if they have all received copies of draft minutes on the planning commission for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, which summarizes the hearing.
Yep.
Yes.
I will now call on city zoning administrator Les Mangus to provide us with a report on this case.
Again, this case has a bit of a, property started its life as single family residence, and back in the nineteen nineties was rezoned and converted to a retail use and has served several retail users over the years. This applicant desires to take it a bit further, operate the, the property as a drinking establishment, possibly a restaurant in the future with a micro brewery. He intends to phase this in as it's his, his first venture into that market. The planning commission held the required public hearings on this at their last meeting and recommended approval with some conditions that screening and buffering be considered by the site plan review committee when the operation, before the operations and any changes to the property are made for parking and outdoor seating and so forth.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? Where am I at? I lost myself again. Yep, that's it. Does the applicant wish to present any new information? We would like to welcome in everyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please lim-
Did you ask that?
I did it on the first page.
Okay.
That's right. We would like to welcome everyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and the video of the public hearing has been made available, so please limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone from the public have any new information? So we don't need the applicant's response because there's nothing to respond to. Assuming the city council received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the state statutes for council action, KSA twelve, dash, seven fifty-seven. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt the findings of fact and recommend that the city council approve zoning case Z, dash, A, twenty-three, dash, zero, 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 four, changing the zoning district classification of the subject property for the existing B two neighborhood business and F one, single family residential loaded city district to the MXN neighborhood transition mixed use district with a special use to allow for a micro brewery with outdoor patio seating.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Les, you mentioned a restaurant. Is that part of the, the neighborhood trend, you know, the MXN? Is that part of the zoning already?
Yes, that would be allowed as a permitted use.
Okay. And then I read the site plan about the screening, and you, you mentioned about the noise ordinance. Is there any way we can limit, you know, so they're not throwing parties at one AM? I mean.
The ordinance also has a condition that the hours of operation be from seven AM to eleven PM.
Okay.
Applies to weekends as well? Does that apply to weekends as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Les, walk me through on how a property goes from, essentially in this case, the front of it being zoned one thing and then the back of it being zoned another thing.
Believe it or not, I was here for that zoning case back in the nineteen nineties.
Yeah, weird.
I know, that surprises you. At that time, there was some opposition to the business uses extending back further on to the, what was unused property at the back of the lot, adjacent to what at that time was single family residences all around. The makeup of that neighborhood has changed a little bit, and we, we did have one neighbor come out, and he was just concerned with what effect it would have on his property, and he was assured with the condition that the operating hours be limited to eleven PM and that the site plan review committee would get a look at screening and buffering between this use and his single family dwelling.
And then what's the reason, you know, we have B two, B three, B four all around, why isn't, why don't we label this one a B two, B three, or B four as opposed to MXN?
He's looking a little bit to the future, to that more walkable, more compact business district center ground, Andover Road and, and Central.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Persons agreed by the final decision of the council on this matter have thirty days after today's action within, within which to appeal to the district court. All right, Heritage Second Edition, thirteen, one Heritage Second Edition Revive Planning Alley and Sanitary Sewer Petition. And Les will talk to us about this as well.
This project has been built and is occupied, single family residences in the Heritage Edition, and there was an error that award-winning Donna caught in the special assessments that there were some parcels that had been assessed twice, and to clean this up, new petitions have been drafted to clean up that error and properly assess the costs of the project.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Will there be any money? I mean, were the people charged in those? No? No money's going to be owed or refunded or anything?
That project hasn't been bonded yet. That's why I was in the process of working on when founded.
Got you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the revised petitions for paving alley and sanitary sewer improvements related to the Heritage Second Edition.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Mayor, I will let you know, I was under the wrong assumption that because it was the same amount of money for the petitions, we didn't need to revise the work ordinance. We do. It's fine. This is, the first step is accepting the petitions, but at a next meeting, we will have those documents that you typically see on an agenda altogether. We'll see those additional documents at the next meeting. I just wanted you to understand the broken apart was just because I didn't think it was necessary, but that's what you have a city attorney for, and he did advise we will do that at the next meeting.
Okay, I was confused. Mayoral Appointments, Planning Commission, and.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Justin Constantino is going to talk to us.
The Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals consists of seven members serving staggered three-year terms. Five members must be residents of the city of Andover, while two of those members must reside outside of the city but within the city's planning area. The Planning Commission currently consists of five members with two vacancies. The two vacant positions must be filled by individuals living within the city limits. Staff recommends the appointment of Mr. Peter Fox and Mr. Clint Tynert to fill the two vacant Planning Commission positions. The terms are set to expire in January twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-six, respectively. With the- With the addition of Mr. Fox and Mr. Tyner, we are at full capacity with seven planning commission members. I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I moved to appoint Peter Fox and Clint Tyner to the planning commission to term set to expire in January twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-six respectively.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I moved to recess in the executive session for consultation with the city attorney pursuant to KSA seven five dash four three one nine B two, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The session is to include the governing body, city attorney and council, community development director and city administrator. The open meeting will resume at eight oh one.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero and we will be right back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to come out of executive.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move, as necessary, to authorize the community development director to solicit bids and expend such funds to commence the demolition, to commence the immediate demolition of the property located at 222 West Highway 54.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Member items, and we'll start with Mr. Berry.
I just want to say thank you to the great city staff and all the volunteers that made Greater Andover Days success. Megan is not here anymore, but I think it-
She's watching.
She's watching. Andover Days was, was great. I think this is one of the better ones I've been to. I loved all the new items. The kids loved all the new, new, you know, kind of newer activities. It was really hot, which was kind of weird for the time, for the time of year, but it was, it was a good time, so I want to thank, thank everybody for that. I think what else? I think that's it. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
I would just, you know, offer all of that as well, and say, and WAMPO today, we were talking about the Safe Routes to Schools federal funding, and just offer up that we make sure that we continue looking to that as opportunity as we grow and expand and new students, you know, arrive in the new homes and apartments that we do have access to funding for Safe Routes to Schools, which includes sidewalks and crosswalks and that kind of thing. That's all.
I have nothing.
I just want to reiterate what Tim said. I, I don't know why this year I thought it was a blast, but I mean, I really had a blast at Greater Andover Days, and I must have been missed in the awards presentation at today's meeting, but I did finish the 5K. First, Mayor, first in my age division, at the first ever inaugural-
Was it just one?
No, there was two, Tim. But thank you for that. In the first inaugural 5K for Greater Andover Days, had a blast completing that and, and doing that, and just Greater Andover Days all around. Again, staff, I thought it was a bang-up job. This was also the, the, the most, I believe, sponsored, the most funds raised so far to Greater Andover Days. So kudos to staff, Megan, everyone that took a hand in that. It was awesome. And then I also, as your city council liaison to the chamber, wanted to bring up the Meet the Candidates Forum will be done at the Butler County, Butler Community College, Kansas Room, there at 13th, on 13th Street, October 17th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. Get ready to meet the candidates and join in the unique opportunity to engage with the candidates from the Butler Community College Board of Trustees, City Council, and Mayor.
And I do have something I do, would like to, we did have the most entries we've had, I think there was 92 parade entries, and, and I want to thank McConnell Air Force Base for bringing out three different entries, four-
Yeah, I think it was three.
And the, and the color guard, so I really appreciate McConnell stepping up for our city.
I do have one last thing to say, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I want to thank the taxpayers for allowing me to go to the Kansas Municipalities League Conference this past weekend. I know that's an expense to the city, but it really brings back lots of ideas, and I do appreciate us allowing me to do that, along with Mr. Homer as well, so.
Well, thanks for representing us, Tim. I mean, you're, you're there all weekend. I was just there on Monday to be the, our voting delegate, but interesting ideas about the splash pad and stuff, and so, sorry, Mayor, I did have, I guess, one more thing.
Sorry.
You know, to, to the workshop questions that we kind of had at the last workshop in regards to, you know, splash pads and fun, you know, it would help me as the city, city council liaison that's not a professional design, building person, if you were to give me maybe examples of what item, whatever items we're workshopping. So in this case, Tim and I, splash pad module, right, at, at the Kansas Municipalities, and they had the Wichita, there was a panel, and one of them was the Wichita Parks and Rec guy, and their newest splash pad was the one at Harrison Park, and so, we took the opportunity to go to that splash pad and actually take a look at, maybe gives us more ideas of what we would want at a splash pad than just seeing what's on paper, seeing what's drawing, so it gives me a good comparison on, when you're asking me in the future, what do you want at the splash pad, or what do you want this to look like? It, it was a little easier to identify what I can give back to you in an email and say, okay, this is, you know, what I see for future, future things, not just splash pad.
I will concur with Homer, being able to see that at Harrison Park actually really kind of brought more of the splash pad in, in mind. I've seen some splash pads, but i-if, you know, if we're doing park stuff, if, if y'all could say, hey, well, there's one over at this Wichita, Wichita Park, or, hey, there's one over here, you can go look at it, that would be very helpful, at least, because I'm very visual, so.
But we did go through all those with nauseam. I mean, Park Recreation Advisory Board, we went through, I mean, everything had been presented over and over and over, so it's, it's not like we were any stretch of the imagination. Staff went to great efforts to, along with the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, to, to go through all the, all the stuff, so we just, it's not like we weren't informed, you know, but I do appreciate your input. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I?
Yes, sir.
I'm excited to announce, I got some news, at the end of last week, I wasn't able to get it into the packet, but Lieutenant Dennis Smith came through again. We were awarded another grant, so through the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office, it was $34,500 for wildfire personal protective equipment, and our match for that grant will be 10%, $3,450. So we'll be working on all the procurement and everything from that.
Is this something we already have? When you say wild, I mean, is that different than your typical suit?
It is. So we started adding some wildfire PPE a few years ago, so we do have a few sets. This is enough to outfit the entire fire department.
Awesome.
We felt like it was important, because I saw these firefighters going out on these 115-degree days, and they would be out on the fire line and come back in, and they were wearing structural turnout gear. Well, it's multiple layers-
Good.
Because it has to be, and wildfire turnout gear is usually one or two or three layers.
Good.
So it's so much cooler, and you can rehab much quicker, we get a lot more work out of them, and so we actually added a few sets, and this will help us add sets for everyone.
Awesome. Please, Chief.
And Chief, when are they moving into the new fire station?
So Crosson will be finished November 3rd, so that we'll actually take possession then.
That's coming up.
November 6th is the mon, that's Friday. Monday, November 6th, is when we're going to start working in earnest, and we don't have the schedule finalized, we're working with the county as well, because they're moving their crews in with us, but we are working very diligently to make sure that we're ready for that time period and get moved over. I can't tell you what the cut-over date is going to be, we're going to have to kind of play it by ear that week, but as the week goes on, we will decide, this morning, we're going to wake up at Station 1, and, and that evening of that same day, we'll go to bed at Station 2. That's cool. It'll happen that week.
Congratulations.
Exciting times around the city. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.